We're out here in beautiful Westwood, working with councilmember Andrea Boone and the Westwood Community Group to deliver food to dozens of homes and hundreds of families here as we move into the holiday weekend. It is such an important time to always make sure that we're taking care of our residents, especially those who are homebound, especially our children who might not be in school right now. And so as we all look forward to celebrating the Fourth of July, we want to be able to make sure that the folks can do that, have food in their homes and celebrate and make sure that we're taking care of those who need it the most. So we've got a wide variety of food that we're delivering today, everything from chicken to corn to bell peppers, making sure that our residents are well-stocked as we move into the holiday weekend and doing our best to do right by the residents of Westwood. And we've got a great group of volunteers who are here helping deliver food with us and looking forward to seeing our residents and saying hello and happy Independence Day.
Today, we are at the East Atlanta branch of the Fulton Atlanta Library, and we are here celebrating a grand reopening. There's been renovations, some expansion, and we're just happy to say we're back in business. Some of the speakers here today, we had Commissioner Rob Pitts and other commissioners, as well as the county manager. And this is a place, this is the center of our community. This is the place where you get information. And one of the things we heard today is that there's signs all over the place talking about getting vaccinated. So it's an information center. And so we're just honored and happy to be here to say, "East Atlanta Library is back, new and improved."
Today, we're out here partnering with the Westwood Community Group with a vision. We have known these ladies for over 20 years, and they work hard in the community. So they wanted to get active and help their neighbors that aren't able to get out. Today, we have fresh chicken, fresh corn, fresh bell pepper, onions, and tomatoes, and big bags of potatoes for those seniors to get ready for the Fourth of July holiday. So I just want to thank my colleague Matt Wasmorland for all of his support and help throughout the years. And we want to give a special thank you to Wayfield Foods, Kroger, and Publix, and the Atlanta Community Food Bank, of course. We'll be supplying food for over 300 residents total today. My heart is warm and so thankful that I am able to provide support and resources for communities with those seniors and those that, not only the seniors, but those that are without employment at the moment and need just an extra boost to help them.
We are here at the Atlanta-Hartsfield-Jackson International Airport. And we're here because during our transportation meeting, we've got reports of where we were now with the numbers of how Hartsfield-Jackson is coming back around, travel is resuming, and the airport is really becoming a place where everyone is feeling comfortable traveling and coming to enjoy our airport now again. And so what we wanted to do as a council is a recovery tour. So I suggested, let's do a recovery tour. And that means let's look to see where we are with the numbers. Are the numbers going up? What do the processes look like? How is security looking? TSA, are concessionaires, are they easily coming back to onboard and back to where they were before COVID-19 hit the whole world? And we're finding that we are. We are absolutely recovering, and we came out to see it firsthand. We want to know where can we help them, our airport? Because our airport is our customer also. Every portion of the airport is a customer of the city of Atlanta, because we actually are responsible for running the airport. And we want to make sure that they know that we're here to help them get everything back on track.
I am so happy to be out here this morning. At Effect Fitness, they are a great fitness business in my community. It's great to be here this morning and just being out here without a mask and being able to get ready for the race for Juneteenth. Here we are at Effect Fitness. We're giving them a proclamation in terms of the celebration of Juneteenth and what it's all about, but also just again, being out here and what they do. This is Juneteenth commemoration. You know, it's a day for us to recognize that misinformation is not a good thing. But we're going to celebrate the good times, and we're going to celebrate advancement. And African-Americans are awesome being celebrated today. Fitness is important, and so I am so happy to be here with my colleague Doris Shepherd in her district, celebrating a day where we're coming together for fitness, for commemoration. It's a great day in Council District 12. There you go. Thank you.
Well, we are here because we are celebrating 10 years of the existence of Jenny Drake Park. And I'm so proud to be here as councilmember who represented this district. Ms. Jenny Drake, who the park is named after, lived next door. She would call my office almost every other day if a leaf fell off a tree in this park. She would call. And she was always a great caretaker. And so it's a great story. Today, the proclamation, of course, is celebrating 10 years of this park, but it's also great that it is the Juneteenth celebration, because we're celebrating not only that enslaved African-Americans were freed finally, when they had already been freed two years ago, but it's also freeing up this community to have a wonderful, lovely green space where they can come and commune with nature. So all of it comes together for the good.
Now therefore, we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the citizens of the city of Atlanta, we proclaim this day, May the 22nd, 2021, as Tom Murphy Day in our fair city and witness thereof. The Plaza Seal of the City of Atlanta will be here to face. Congratulations.
We're here today to celebrate Tom Murphy and 40 years of his restaurant Murphy's in the heart of Virginia Highland. That's unusual these days to have a business owner, locally owned, lives in the area for that period of time. And, you know, he serves a fantastic meal. It's a place people come for baby showers, for brunches, for weddings, and he's been tremendous in giving back to the community as well. I'm just so excited that Murphy's, Tom says that they're back to their pre-COVID business. People are out and about. He's making it a safe place to eat. I've been back here, and it's one of my favorite places, and I hope people will get out as they feel comfortable and back into their local restaurants.
Everyone, this is Amir Faroki, councilmember for District 2 and chair of the City Council of Zoning Committee. I want to welcome both my colleagues and members of the public to today's committee meeting. It's July 12, 2021, and we will go ahead and dive into this remote meeting. I see a few of my colleagues on the system, but we may have some on, we're just calling it as well. So if I could ask Ms. Lindo to please do a roll call, make sure we have quorum.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair. We have councilmember Carla Smith here. We have councilmember Marcy Collier-Overstreet. We have councilmember Andrea L. Boone present. We have councilmember Howard Shook.
Audio only for the moment.
Councilmember Andre Dickens. Councilmember Kleda Winslow. A councilmember Marcy Collier-Overstreet. I believe I received notice through the phone. Mr. Chair, we do have a quorum of members online.
Thank you. And since you have the microphone, please proceed with our remote meeting statement.
Yes, good morning. Today's committee meeting will be conducted remotely as advertised and in accordance with Georgia Code Section 50-14-1. The meeting will be conducted in conformance with Robert Rules of Order and the Rules of Council as authorized by the City Code. The public may access the meeting conference bridge toll-free by dialing 877-579-6743 and entering conference ID number 831-599-1256. This information was also provided on the Friday, July 9, 2021, public meeting notice. The public may also view the meeting on channel 26, the council's homepage, at citycouncil atlanta ga gov, Facebook and Twitter pages at ATL Council, and the council's YouTube channel. Today's meeting agenda was also published and made available on Friday, July 9 via the city's website at atlantacityga.iqm2.com. In addition, the public is able to submit comments that were unrelated to zoning items that have or will go before the zoning review board via voicemail at 404-330-6035 yesterday between the hours of 4:00 and 7:00 p.m. These comments will be played during the public comment portion of this meeting. All persons present on the remote council meeting conference bridge are requested to please mute your phones and speakers. Beating participants wishing to speak must be acknowledged by the committee chair. Mr. Chair, we also have with us Kieta Holmes, the Director of the Office of Zoning and Development.
Great, thank you, and thank you for announcing Ms. Holmes' presence. I believe also councilmember Overstreet has joined us as well, so I want to make sure she is noted present for the meeting and for purposes of quorum if we lose anybody. Our next item is to adopt agenda. I will move to approve it. Can I get a second?
Second, Overstreet.
Second by councilmember Overstreet. Ms. Lindo, please open the vote, and if you're not on the system and need to voice vote, just go ahead and voice your vote.
Boone, yes?
Will everyone please vote?
Mr. Shook. We can probably head to four, Mr. Lindo, with the votes we have.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I've been knocked off audio three times in rapid succession here if someone was trying to contact me.
She were, wanted to weigh your vote on the motion to approve the agenda.
Oh, I'm all for that.
Thank you.
Let's do the minutes while I'm here.
Mr. Chair, that's five yea, zero nay. The meeting agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. Motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Shook, can I get a second?
Second.
Please open the votes. And again, if you're a voice voter, go ahead and sound your vote.
The vote is open, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Boone?
Yes, Boone.
The vote's closed, Mr. Chair. That's five yea, zero nay. The meeting minutes have been approved.
Thank you. Our next item is public comment. We have three comments, totally about six and a half minutes. So Ms. Lindo, if you don't mind reading the public comment statement and playing the public comment, that would be appreciated.
Yes, Mr. Chair. No public comments are allowed on legislative items that have gone or will go before the zoning review board. One moment. One moment, Mr. Chair. The comments should begin shortly, Mr. Chair.
My name is Representative Antonin Armus. I am a spiritual B.A. who is dearly expounding for the no longer seen and believing in religion. Look at the condition of Atlanta. Look at the condition of the young, darkened people here in Chappell, Atlanta, from 16 to 25 to 35 years old. They often fail war. So why are I talking to the zoning project? Really? Why is it that you cannot, with ideals that are there, none of them is committed? You sit on other conditions. Why aren't you more sensitive to the condition of a people that have been suffering, given state of drug abuse for over 400 years? Why is it here in the state of drug abuse that you have all this development, all these real estate developments, all these real estate housing that have problems that they rent and renovate and continue to rent and escalate the cost and ensuring that half the number can't afford to live next door to youth gentrified only that's been remodeled and somebody that only looked like them for the last 46 years moving in? The kind of age that I'm calling still asset to the community. Stick on ways to help change the condition for your neighbors that don't have much else to renovate the home. They are born to come to the hall of Mr. Howard, Marcy, and myself to ask the zoning condition, just find ways to make it easy, feasible, so everyone can handle a place to stay, a place to live, a bird that flies in the sky as a home. Don't cause the bird nothing good. Flies into a tree, but the humans, the spirits of being that you say believe in God, like you believe in the God, they create a name and calling God. Don't even look out for the government brothers, not even the preacher, not even the darker preachers coming asking zoning. We have to prioritize more the government members who live there to be zoned to accommodate the homeless. Why does it we have to have people crying out in Atlanta? I fear the truth isn't at the age, but to hate the poor without knowing that the number empowerment. Look at George and Todd and Jay. You got them on TV showing how they just take over the jail and steal television. And no security that even help them change the condition for the inmates that don't want to fight. Go on and do something zoning in Atlanta. Do something for the people there who are not like the majority of people of this country.
Greetings, councilmembers and staffs. Special greetings to you citizens and voters of advance for paying attention to our government inaction this election year. Ben Howard, change advocate, public policy analyst. NBUR agenda may be found by using the City Planning Department website or doing an internet search for quote NTU meeting scheduled unquote. You will not find an agenda for NTUR for July because the NTUR9 forces the NTUR neighbors to take a 31-day getaway from it all. On the Neighborhood Planning Unit R agenda, when they get back to business in August, one will find the email address for the chair of NTUR. One will note that on the very next agenda line, the email address for the vice chair, Astrina Robinson, is listed as the same email address for the chair. Even worse, an email address for our former NTU coordinator was also listed as the same email address as that for Ricardo Jacobs and Astrina Robinson. By forcing the public to use the same email address, Ms. Robinson continues her control by ensuring that any emails addressed to the quote chair of Neighborhood Planning Unit R can also be previewed by her as her cohort. In addition to that, one may find that the email address used by the NTUR zoning committee R, Renetta O'Scott, is also the same as the others. In this election year, let's see how many candidates, without fear or favor, are willing to stand up to Astrina Robinson, Colas Claire, Ricardo Jacobs, Renetta O'Scott, Albert White, Allison Hathaway, Sherri Williams, Cheryl Brown, Agent X, and the NTUR9 allied cohorts and supporters.
Hello, my name is Marcy McLeod. I'm addressing the City Council zoning. I am asking about the 200 units that's going to be built. I believe it's on Camisa Road. I believe this is your district, overstreet. A lot of people feel like they're shocked, they're not aware of the 200 units that's going to be built. What's going to happen with the people? Going to have insight? Are we going to have a discussion about the units? Are we just going to just build it, and the community don't have anything to say so? This is the question. Are we going to have any type of talk about the 200 units going to be built on Camisa Road? Are the community here not going to be involved with it?
Ms. Lindo, is that the end of public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that concludes the public comment.
Great, thank you for that. Our next item is item number G, ordinances for first reading, and it has been our practice for over a year. These will be sounded in full at our August 2, 2021 council meeting. Just remember to the public who may wonder why that's a few weeks away, we head into recess after this week. So the third and fourth weeks of July, there will be no formal council meetings, and we'll pick things up at the beginning of August. So August 2, 2021, will be our next full council meeting, at which time ordinances for first read will be read in and referred to the zoning review board. So there's no action needed here today on those. Our next agenda item is item number H, ordinances for second reading. If I could ask Ms. Holmes to read them in, we will vote on them as they come at us.
Certainly. Good morning, everyone. Item number 19, 2100227Z2112, an ordinance by zoning committee to resolve some single-family residential beltline overlay for multifamily residential beltline overlay for property located at 373, 379, 385, 393, 407, 411, 417, 425, 431, 437, and 433 Climax Street, 380, 386, 394, 375, 381, 387, and 389 Dalton Street, and 505 Inglewood Avenue Apartment 3. Staff recommendation approval, if you recommendation, no recommendation, VRB recommendation approval.
Great, I will, please go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Need to approve.
Can I get a second? Ms. Boone, do you want a second? Okay, thank you, Mr. Shook. Please open the vote.
The vote is open, Mr. Chair.
And Ms. Boone, if you'd like to voice vote, please go ahead. I think we can close the vote, Ms. Lindo.
The vote is closed. That's four yea. Is there a nay, Mr. Chair? That I am...
The vote is closed. That's four yea. Is there a nays, Mr. Chair? That item is favorable.
Mr. Chair, if I could take items 2021 and 22 of the block?
Please.
Item number 202100150, D2111, an amended ordinance by zoning committee to rezon from single-family residential to mixed residential commercial conditional for property located at 374, 380, 388, 394, 400, 406, 412, 418, 424, 430, 436, and 442 Climax Street Southeast. Staff and VRB recommendation approval conditional, NP recommendation no recommendation. Item number 21, 2100390, U2108, an amended ordinance by zoning committee for a special youth permit for a private school pursuant to 16060051L for property located at 650 Montgomery Ferry Drive, 1798, 1794, 1792, 1786, 1781, 1785, 1789, 1795, and 1799 Crofton Drive. Staff recommendation and VRB recommendation approval conditional, NP recommendation approval. And item number 22, 2100392, U2110, an amended ordinance by zoning committee for a special youth permit for a place of worship pursuant to 1618P005 for property located at 17314th Street. Staff and VRB recommendation approval conditional, NP recommendation approval.
Thank you. I will, go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Move to approve as amended.
Great. All second, please open the votes.
The vote is open, Mr. Chair.
And Ms. Boon, if you are with us, feel free to voice vote. Thank you.
Yes, Boon, yes.
The vote's closed. That's five yea, zero nays. Mr. Chair, those items are favorable as amended.
Thank you. Item number 23, Ms. Holmes?
Item number 23, 2100055, D2127, an ordinance by Councilmember JP Masticai, substituted by zoning committee to amend the 1982 Atlanta zoning ordinance as amended to amend Section 1626003 entitled Conditions of Granting a Variant, and to create a new Section 1626008 entitled Administrative Zoning Setback Variant, Varied for the Preservation of Trees and for Other Purposes, and staff request to hold this item, Mr. Chair.
Can I get a motion to hold?
Come on, Smith.
Thank you. Second by Shook. Please open the vote.
The vote is open, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Faroki, this is Councilmember Dickens that just joined after some technical difficulties. I'll be voting yea.
Excellent. Welcome, Councilmember Dickens.
Will everyone please vote? Councilmember Boon?
Yes.
That's six yea, zero nays. That item will be held.
Thank you. Item number 24, Ms. Holmes?
Item 24, 2100387, D2146, an ordinance by zoning committee to rezon from single-family residential to multifamily residential for property located at 1840 and 1850 Children's Drive Southwest. Staff, NP, and VRB recommendation denial.
Move to adverse, Smith.
Second.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, I was on mute. I asked you to please open the vote, and then Councilmembers Dickens and Boon, please voice your vote.
The vote is open, Mr. Chair.
Boon, yes.
Dickens, yes.
Thank you. The vote's closed. That's six yea, zero nays. That item is adverse.
Item number 25, 2100118, Z2108, an ordinance by zoning committee to rezon from mixed residential commercial conditional to mixed residential commercial conditional for a change of conditions. Staff recommendation, VRB recommendation filed, NP recommendation no recommendation.
Move to file, Smith.
Second.
Second by Shook. Please open the votes.
The vote is open, Mr. Chair.
And Councilmembers Boon and Dickens, please feel free to voice vote.
Dickens, yes.
Boon, yes.
The vote's closed. That's six yea, zero nays. That item will be filed.
Excellent. That concludes our legislative items for today's zoning committee meeting. I will pause to see if there's any comments from the body as we move toward adjournment.
We just hear that sweet baby in the background. That's probably the interesting thing I've heard today. I'll make a motion.
Quite the pipes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Everyone have a great day, and we will reconvene as a committee on Monday, August the 9th. Take care.
Thank you.